United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is to approve the agenda, or approve, is to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Motion to approve the agenda of the Tuesday, May 27th, 2025 Planning Commission.
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes of, or the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Aye.
I'm ahead of myself, it's hot. So the agenda is approved. Next item is to approve the minutes of May 12th, 2025.
Motion to approve the minutes of May 12th, 2025.
I'll second that.
All in favor of approving the minutes of May 12th, 2025? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving right along. Next item is the Burschens Shores Third Edition. Are you, oh, are you turning it down?
I'm temperature-wise.
I don't think so.
But you're making it hotter.
She's turning up more. Let's get this over with.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant for tonight's application is Jean and Janet Burschens. They are the trustees for the property. The property is located at 9579 45th Street, which is comprised of four PIDs. The site is a little over 134 acres. It has guided rural area development in the city's comp plan. It is zoned rural residential. One parcel is public facilities, and it does have a shoreline overlay on it. And there are two requests before you tonight. The first is for a four-lot minor subdivision, and then a zoning map amendment. This is cleanup for estate planning purposes. The photo on the right shows the existing site conditions. Right now, it is mostly crop farming, some wetlands, and one homestead. So the site is very long. This first slide shows the north half of the proposed subdivision, north of 45th Street. There will be two parcels. And the second slide shows the south side of the proposed subdivision. The south side of 45th Street will also have two parcels. So four parcels altogether, two north of 45th Street, two south of 45th Street. And this might be a little hard to see, but I merged the two photos together, so this is what the new subdivision would look like on one page. The city allows for plating exceptions when minor subdivisions meet required criteria. Staff has reviewed and found that the proposed subdivision will not result in more than four parcels. Instead, four parcels are being reconfigured. The second finding is that there is no new infrastructure or streets required. Instead, the existing street right-of-way will be dedicated. Easements have been dedicated where applicable. The proposed minor subdivision meets the rural residential zoning district requirements, and the request meets the access and spacing requirements. Again, only one driveway exists on-site with the current homestead. And the photos on the bottom are a side-by-side comparison of the existing lot layout versus the proposed lot layout. The second part of this request is to clean up the zoning of the property. The parcel outlined in red will need to be corrected to rural residential in order for the minor subdivision to take place. The parcel outlined in red was zoned public facility sometime in the early 2000s that we found for a planned Public Works facility. That was then shifted to its current spot on Ideal Avenue in 2005, and the zoning was never corrected for this parcel. And correction of the zoning map will make more consistent with the city's comp plan and future land use of rural area development. Staff sent the application out for agency review on April 16th. Public Works provided comments regarding the right-of-way and trail easements. The applicant has addressed this with their revised property line, property lines on their plat. The applicant is working on a Valley Branch permit. The city engineer provided comments that the required easements and right-of-way appear to be satisfied. They also provided the same comment regarding the trail easement, which has been addressed. Fire department provided their standard comments regarding roads, water lines, access, gates, and addressing. And the city attorney provided a plat opinion that the applicant has been working on. The DNR did not provide comments. This application was sent out for a public hearing to surrounding property owners on April 29th. We had an issue with the notice not being published in the paper, so we remailed the notices on May 12th. So there was two mailings. It was published in the local paper on May 16th. Staff has not received any public comments at this time. Staff has three findings for the proposed requests. The first is that the minor subdivision and zoning map amendment are consistent with the city's comp plan and future land use map. The second is that the minor subdivision and zoning map amendment are consistent with the rural residential zoning district. And the third is that the minor subdivision meets the exceptions to plating. And there are six recommended conditions of approval for the applications. The first is that all necessary permits are obtained. The second is that the applicant works with the city to assign addresses to the four parcels. The third is that they address the plat opinion. The fourth is related to the accessory buildings on-site. Currently, the one homestead parcel would have too many accessory buildings as it currently sits, but because it's joined with one of the parcels north of 45th Street and used for ag purposes, it would meet the exception for an over 40-acre parcel used for farming agricultural purposes. So if the property is no longer under common ownership, or they cease farming activities, then they would need to meet the required accessory building allowances for each, the parcel of each size. The fifth is that the special assessments currently levied against the property are either going to be paid off or transferred prior to release of the plat for recording. And the final condition is that they meet that standard expiration of 180 days. And I've recommended motion for approval. Can stand for any questions. We do have a representative for the applicant here tonight.
Any questions for Sophia? Does the applicant wish to speak?
What's the question?
Okay. For the future plan, when is this slated for development?
For development? There's no plans at this time.
There's no plan for development, state's rural residential, there's no current?
Correct. It's just for estate planning.
Okay.
For the children.
But from our comp, long-term comp plan, would this fall, this doesn't fall into the 2040s or the 2050s?
Well, it's called out in the comp plan as rural area development, so that would be your rural, one unit per 10 acres. If somebody were to develop, they would see an application.
Right, right.
It's not within the musa, so it's not in a phase.
Property's gonna stay as ag, all of those, all of those lots will be? Okay.
Correct. The applicant hasn't indicated any plans for development or change of use.
I'm wondering why the special assessment, if they're gonna stay in the green acres?
The assessment's related to a street project.
Okay.
And they're paying down that, that assessment.
Not green acres. Okay, that makes more sense. Thank you.
If that, we will.
No. I would look. Public hearing.
Susan, did you have?
No, it's a public hearing.
Okay. We need a mo, we don't need a motion to open the public hearing.
Yeah, we do.
We better have one.
Well, I move to open the public hearing. I'll second it.
All right.
There you go.
With that, it's, all those in favor, thank you.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Very good. At 6:39, we'll open the public hearing. And there's no, we have no comments from you, no comments emailed in, no one in the room. We'll give it a minute, in case someone comes in. We're gonna wait till 6:40. Yes. I know. All right, I'm calling 6:40, and we'll close.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Yes. Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing. Second, very good. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The public hearing is closed at 6:40.
Yeah. I would like to make a motion to move to recommend approval of the Burschens Shores Third Edition Minor Subdivision and Zoning Map Amendment requested based on the findings of fact and conditions presented in the staff report. I'll second that.
All right. Any comments or concerns? And discussion? All of that, we'll bring it to a vote. All in favor of the motion on the table, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes.
This is slated for City Council on June 3rd.
Awesome.
All right, good evening. Our next one is the Primrose School Daycare Conditional Use Permit. The applicant is Primrose School. It's located in the Bridgewater Development. The current zoning is commercial, the comp plan is commercial. This use requires a conditional use permit. So, as you can see, it's a two-story building, 12 classrooms, 192 children and 20 staff members, one outdoor play area, two outdoor, I'm sorry, one indoor play area, two outdoor play areas. You can see that, that area, it goes through a design review for our design standards. We've been working with the applicant to make sure all the materials meet the design standards.
Nice.
You can see the site plan, the site layout meets the design standards too, and it meets all the parking standards. It's gone through city and agency review. Nothing unusual here. There were some comments from the landscape architect. We've received modified landscape plans that meet all the standards for landscaping. One thing to note too is that site is still being worked on through the engineering and putting in the roads. That's one of the things that will be required, is that they cannot get the building permit until everything has been accepted on the Public Works side, engineering side. The recommended findings, we have 12 findings. They meet all of them. Should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, welfare, consistent with the 2040 comp plan, compatible with the existing neighborhood, meets development standards, meets shoreline management standards, not on the shoreline. Shall be compatible on appearance with existing character, should not be hazardous or create a nuisance, will serve adequately by essential public facilities and services, will not add additional public cost. Proposed use should not produce noise, smoke, fumes, should not cause significant traffic congestion, and not cause an impact to scenic features. So the conditions of approval, pretty standard. These are the first four. Just having to work through, get all, all the permits and work with all the agencies. Two is substantial construction has to take place within 12 months of the city approval, or the conditional use is void. You can see, we received comments from all the public agencies, and they would have to follow those conditions. Bridgewater subdivision improvements must be constructed and accepted before the permit is issued. Then we have more conditions of approval that are pretty standard here. Enter into a site improvement agreement, also enter into a stormwater maintenance easement agreement. This is on a stormwater reuse plan, the entire development, so they'll be a part of that. Just encroachment agreements for certain activities when it comes to drainage utilities. For signage, they'll come back for the signage at a later date. And then, any expansion or modification of the building, outdoor play area or parking lot shall require a conditional use permit amendment. And then 10, any portion of the improvements with a city or county access drainage or utility easement or subject to removal or modification by the holder of said easement, subject to any applicable easement agreements. Just saying, there's drainage easements that go through the site to the stormwater ponds. So, public hearing was set out to surrounding properties May 12th. Public hearing notice was published May 16th. We have not received any comments at this point. This is our proposed motion. The applicant is here, and I believe he's an engineer for the Bridgewater?
You mentioned something about the traffic. Does anything have to be done with the existing roads on Stillwater or anything like that?
It's all being done in the development. So turn lanes and all that's already taken care of.
It's already being taken care of. This is pretty easy going in there then, isn't it?
I'd like to follow up on that also. I always have a concern whenever we're right about, coming about into the open space development and the people that are living on the Stillwater Way. And I know that that's supposed to be a trail at some point that connects through, from the Regional Park Reserve and so on, up through with Washington County. And so I do have some concerns on that. And I know that that is really heavily used. People cut through that, that Stillwater Way all the time, and that they go fast. And the curve that comes in, I mean, if you, if you don't have your turn signals on, if you're going somewhere, you get run over. So I do have a concern on speed in that area and the number of people. In addition, I know we used to have airport safety zones. I guess that's gone now because they changed the runway a little bit, and there's, they're supposed to be like so many feet clearance from when a plane's coming in.
So just a quick comment on that. They were sent the, the plans, and they provided comments and said it doesn't need a bearing.
Yeah, it was 34 feet, and they would have like 130 or something. But just, I remember planes coming down in the field. So that's why I always kind of bring this up as a concern. And then...
They've always come down in the field across Stillwater Boulevard.
Right.
Yeah. That's the emergency landing area.
If they make it that far. Yep. And, but those are my concerns. And then the stormwater, I think, what's the, has that been taken care of? Is that gonna be a holding pond, or is that gonna be infiltration pond? Because there's differences there.
I think there's two different ponds. That one, I believe, next to it is an infiltration pond.
And then the traffic flow? How's the traffic flow gonna come into the facility? From Stillwater Way or from the main?
Slightly from Stillwater Boulevard, because it's gonna be right on the edge of Stillwater Boulevard. So when you turn in, there's gonna be the pond, and then you make the turn to the right.
Right there.
This would be right there, and then the bank.
So that would be the entrance and exit would be on Stillwater Boulevard, not Stillwater Way?
It would, you would go out of the way if you wanted to go that direction.
That was my, some of my thoughts, and just wanted to go through that one. On this drawing, you're showing Upper 40th Street North. That's actually Stillwater Way, right?
No.
That's a drive within the development?
Exactly.
Okay, got it.
Somewhere, I saw, you had a nice picture somewhere of the whole plot that...
Yeah, there it is. That, you can really see where it is on that. That might help. Yeah, it's there on 40th. It won't, doesn't look, oh, I see where the turn is there.
And the lots to the left is the stormwater pond.
Okay, so they'll come in next to that and then get up to Upper 40th.
So how do we envision this fitting aesthetically to the rest of what's going in to the, to the Bridgewater Village?
We've only seen the bank site, so I'm trying to recall exactly what it looks like. It meets the design standards, a lot of glass, stone.
Okay.
And it's kind of similar to this one too. You see, I haven't looked at it closely, but you can see brick and...
Yeah, okay.
All the approved materials.
That's a very attractive building.
It is.
Thank you. It'll mean a lot to the people that live in that area.
Any other questions for staff? Does developers want to speak?
I'm happy to. I can introduce myself.
Sure. Who are you?
Name, rank, serial number.
Yeah, so, good evening. My name is Marvin Wenzman. I'm with Primrose Schools. We're headquartered out of Atlanta, but actually live just down the road in St. Paul. So, happy about the 15-minute drive versus a plane, plane ride tonight. But yeah, just a quick background of Primrose, we have over 500 locations, schools. We call them Primrose Schools based on the curriculum that we offer. They're actually childcare centers, so daycares. So unlike, you know, the traffic question, unlike the school, you know, there's not one point that school starts, right? The traffic is coming in, and peak drop-off, drop-off times in the morning are roughly 7:30 to 8:30, and pickup times are roughly 3:30 to 5:30 in the afternoon. But, as I was mentioning, we have 500 locations in 34 states. We have 20 within the Twin Cities market. And, yeah, our franchise owners are local residents of Lake Elmo. We franchise operate all of our buildings. And they are not here, as you can see, but they are very excited about the opportunity. And, yeah, we're excited as well.
I can introduce myself. My name's Brendan Barf. I'm an engineer with Stan Tech Consulting Services. Specialize in the stormwater management. So if there's any specific questions regarding that, I'm happy to answer any questions we have.
Glad it exists.
Stormwater management is always kind of interesting to me because sometimes it gets managed and sometimes it, it doesn't get maintained. And that was always kind of a concern that I see. People will say, what, what did you put in my backyard? And then they don't realize exactly how it's to function.
Right.
So that was the stormwater management. I believe this is to be reused for irrigation purposes also?
That's correct. So there will be, on the north side of Upper 40th, there will be a wet pond, a retention pond for reuse irrigation of the green space on-site. And then, just directly to the west of the Primrose Daycare, there will be an infiltration basin that will...
Recharge.
Recharge the groundwater.
Recharge the water.
And reduce the volume ultimately leaving the site. That was one of the conditions that the Valley Branch Watershed District required prior to approval.
Does that run through a filtration system then, in order to use it in the sprinklers? How does that work?
So, the, the infiltration system will not be part of the reuse. It's more of the volume reduction and water quality benefit that it provides. The wet pond that's north of Upper 40th, that will serve, it's been oversized to provide a reservoir of sorts to allow a drawdown, and then when you get rainfall and runoff, to recharge and provide that water again for the irrigation purposes.
There must be some pump system and filtrations and all of that in somewhere.
There's a pump system in there. It's gonna have particle filtration and UV treatments, so the water coming out is as clean as possible, kill the bacteria, make it free from sediment.
I was interested, you said this is a daycare, and it's two stories, and I forgot, 12 classrooms, I think? Something like that?
That's correct, yeah.
What are the ages?
Six weeks to five-plus, really. The franchise owners have an option to offer, you know, for, the average age is six weeks to five.
Right.
But they do have some after-school programs as well. We call them explorers. So, yeah. All ages zero to three are on the first floor, and then older ages are on the second floor.
And approximately, how long would it take to come to capacity for something like this?
That's a good question. On average, I'm guessing probably a couple years. It's not quick.
No, no. Yeah.
Yeah, and the reason we went to two stories, we usually do one-story buildings, but with the undevelopable land on the south end, and the parking requirements, landscaping, it kind of forced us to do the two-story, which is, is common.
Okay.
We have a lot of buildings two-story as well.
That'll be elevator in the building?
Yep, that's correct.
Interesting.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Public hearing?
No, that's correct.
I move to open the public hearing.
I've got a question.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay. One thing that, that bothered me was the noise, and there's a comment in the, in the documentation I have, developers should assess the noise situation and take any actions outside of the county right-of-way deemed necessary to minimize the impact of highway noise. But it talks about NAC, which is Noise Area Classification, and that's the first I've ever heard of that. I don't know what that is. Because it says residential use is located adjacent to, often get complaints of highway noise. Is that something we should be aware of or learn about?
Where's it? It's in the report or?
Yeah, it was, it was just in the documentation that I have.
Wasn't it?
From Washington County.
I guess it was a letter from Washington.
A letter from Washington County.
I saw that.
It was dated April 25th, 2025.
In terms of the county's notes, they'd have to meet all the standards that the county sets. So if there's something specific the county's concerned with, with the noise.
It talks about the trail, and then talks about noise, so I just wanted to be known and aware that this is there.
I imagine if there's a noise issue, it's gonna be from the airport.
The highway.
The airport's gonna be.
Yeah, because there's a lot of traffic, airport traffic, that pattern, they run a lot.
You know, we put schools in places where there's much more noise. There's a motion on the table to open the public hearing? All in favor?
We have a second.
Second.
Oh, we did, I thought we had a second, all right.
Yeah, we had a second.
Now we have a second. Thank you. I can do anything. All in favor of opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Now, the public hearing is now open at 6:55. And do we have anyone from the public? We have no public comments that were remailed in or sent, and no one's here.
No public comments.
And with that, since there are none, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Just want to thank the applicant for a couple things here real quick I saw in the notes that I appreciate. One, I'm very happy to know that the owners are living in, in Lake Elmo. I also like the idea that, that the, that there are stalls for the drop-off, that the children will be walked inside of the building versus just dropping and leaving. I'm guessing that has a lot to do with the age of the, of the children in the school.
Jane, let's close the public hearing before we do.
Right, let's close the public hearing first.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Again, and with that, the 6:56, the public hearing's closed. Any additional discussion or comments?
Call the question to close the public hearing.
I'm sorry, correct. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Public hearing's closed at 6:56. Any additional discussion or comments?
Just comments, mostly.
I move to recommend the approval of the crush from Primrose Schools Franchise Corporation for a conditional use permit to construct and establish a daycare facility at the property described at 11899 Upper 40th Street, based on the findings of fact with the conditions listed in the staff report.
I'll second that.
I think it's a great thing for our community. Primrose is, is known as, is...
I said it's known, well-known, the well-known.
Yeah, it's a well-known brand, if you will, considered one of the higher-end daycares. And I think this, especially this portion of town, and with a growing population of young kids, it'll be great. I think the building looks great. It's awesome that they were able to make it a two-story with an elevator and, and still fit their performer, so for those reasons, I'm all for it.
I agree. I appreciate the fact that the land usage, taking into consideration the land around it and what needs to be done, and it looks like it was done well. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I like the mixed-use community. It's a nice way to blend from the commercial into the residential, and I think that the building is very nicely designed so that it, it does seem like it's a transition there. I love that there's opportunities for local employment, it's stimulating our local economy, their, their vision for the well-rounded and family-friendly community, and hitting the need to support our growing population. I, I think all of it is positive, so I, I love it. I'm, I'm surprised that we have that many young people in our community, but it's good. We're a growing, growing community.
It's going fast, too. So I think that's a good thing it'll fit future demand too, it sounds like.
For sure.
Which is coming very fast.
Yeah. It's nice to see some kind of school in the downtown area.
Noted. All right. Shots fired. With that, there's a motion on the table. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? With that, the motion passes.
All right, thank you. I think this is June 3rd also.
Next item is new unfinished business?
No items.
No items. Communications update?
No items that have been reviewed by the Planning Commission, went to City Council between now and our last meeting. June 9th will be canceled, and then our next meeting will be June 23rd. And just a note that we do have one vacancy on the Planning Commission, so if anybody wants to apply, now's your chance.
We have an empty chair. Did the development over by QuickTrip, did that get presented?
Not to City Council yet.
Okay, I thought that was on a deadline.
I believe they'll be going to the second meeting in June. So they got a little extension.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments?
I've got a comment. I believe there's a meeting tomorrow at the middle school on 10th Street and Lake Elmo Avenue for the road, for transportation. I wrote that on my calendar, I just wanted to make sure that that is correct. It was just an open house from 4:00 to 6:00 tomorrow?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay.
Is that a school district?
Washington County is an open house on the, what's happening with 10th Street and Lake Elmo. There's no formal presentation, just an open house.
For those who are interested. There we go. All right. Do we have a motion to, if there's no other comments, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second, anyone?
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor? All right. The meeting's adjourned.
It was easy.
7:01.